Good evening, and thank you for joining us this evening. We'll go ahead and get started. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Ortega?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Blad?
Here. If you have placed that for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you remain standing for a moment of silence for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will move to Agenda Item Number Three as a consent agenda. The following bids aside is may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Councils may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the May 13, 2021 work session. B, Golf Advisory Committee appointment. Councils may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of John McCloskey to serve as a member of the Golf Advisory Committee replacing Larry Morton. Whose term expired? John's term will begin October 22, 2021, and will expire October 22, 2024. C, Historic Preservation Commission appointment. Councils may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Dennis Clusters to serve as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission, replacing Joshua Kiggins, who resigned. Dennis's term will begin October 22, 2021, and will expire August 6, 2024. D, Planning and Zoning Commission appointments. Councils may wish to confirm the mayor's appointments of Margiana Hewlett and Whitney Finwick to serve as members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, replacing Cindy Anderson and Taylor Wood. Margiana's term will begin October 22, 2021, and will expire July 2, 2025. Whitney's term will begin October 22, 2021, and will expire November 6, 2024. E, Police Personnel Administrative Rules. Councils may wish to approve proposed changes to the Pocatello Police Department Personnel Administrative Rules, P-A-R. F, Council Decision Bonneville Commons Final Plaid Approval. Councils may wish to adopt this decision, approving a final plat for Bonneville's Commons, which subdivides approximately 1.87 acres of land into 25 lots, which will consist of 20 residential lots, four open space lots, and one lot to be used for private drives. The subdivision is owned residential, commercial, professional, RCP, and will be accessed from East Fremont Street, East Lander Street, and North 8th Avenue, and North 9th Avenue.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of Agenda Item Number Three, Items A through F.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four, Calendar Review. Councils may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. November 4, 5:30 PM Clarification Meeting. At 6:00 PM, regular City Council Meeting. November 11, City Council Work Session has been canceled. Early voting will continue at Vannett County Elections Office, 141 North 6th Avenue. Voting hours are Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 4:30 PM. The last day to vote early is October 29. October 30, Zoo Roo at Zoo Idaho, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Zoo Idaho will be open on weekends only through October 31st. Annual leaf collection is scheduled for November 1 through November 27. Leaves must be placed in a large paper compostable bags, not boxes or plastic bags. Place compostable leaf bags curbside by 7:00 AM on a regular collection day to be taken to the Vannett County Landfill Compost Site. November 2 is the election day. Please go and vote. November 11 is Veterans Day. City offices will be closed for this holiday. Sanitation Department Collection trucks will remain on their regular schedule. Reminder, citizens are required to wear face covering when entering any city of Pocatello building or facility, or while riding in public transit buses, and at the Pocatello We will move to Agenda Item Five as a Public Hearing, Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2022 Needs Hearing. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the citizens and organizations on any housing or non-housing community development needs they have identified that should be prioritized and included in the program year 2022 annual action plan. I declare the public hearing open. Christine, how are you?
I'm doing well, Mayor. How are you?
Good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Christine Howe, and I am the Community Development Block Grant Program Coordinator in the Planning and Development Services Department. As part of the CDBG program requirements, the city has a citizen participation plan that guides the community engagement and outreach when approving plans, reports, and federal documents. As part of the citizen participation plan, the city holds a needs hearing to gather feedback and public comment related to the community needs. The information gathered at this hearing tonight is then incorporated into the annual action plan. Unlike previous program years, the city is also undergoing the planning process for a new five-year consolidated plan, which will determine the strategic priorities for program years 2022 through 2026. Therefore, we will utilize the feedback gathered at this public needs hearing and incorporate that into the five-year consolidated plan, which will also include a year-one action plan for program year 2022 that extends from April 1, 2022, through March 31, 2023. To date, the city has held stakeholder meetings with partnering agencies and community organizations, conducted a survey which received over 750 responses, conducted one-on-one meetings with agencies and stakeholders, and utilized HUD-provided data to identify needs. Preliminary needs include providing decent housing by preserving the affordable housing stock, reducing discriminatory barriers, transitioning homeless persons and families into housing, as well as providing suitable living environment through more livable neighborhoods, increased housing opportunities, and investment in deteriorating neighborhoods, and finally expanding economic opportunities through jobs, homeownership, and empowerment of low- to moderate-income persons to achieve self-sufficiency. At this time, there is no adopted federal budget for the plan, so the exact funding amount for program year 2022 is unknown. For the purposes of planning, staff is using the city's program year 21 allocation of about $450,000 to determine the five-year plan projections. Because the city is undergoing a consolidated planning process, staff will prepare a presentation on the con-plan and a one-year annual action plan, including the priority area of funding recommendations to present to the council at an upcoming work session. Feedback and answers to questions will be incorporated into the plan, and a subsequent presentation for its adoption will take place at a public hearing in January. The plan will be submitted to HUD in February of 2022, and it will include the five-year strategic plan and the one-year annual action plan. As part of the project approval process, our partnering agencies attend a technical assistance meeting, which we held in September. They submit statements of intent to apply, provide draft applications, and then submit final applications. This year, close to 20 agencies attended the TA meeting, and we received 18 statements of intent to apply from 11 different agencies in the city. The final applications are due on Monday, November 22, and then the CDBG Advisory Committee will review and score applications based on a scoring rubric and make recommendations to the council for funding. Based on the statements of intent to apply, three agencies are seeking funding for housing projects. Six agencies have submitted statements for public service projects, and three agencies have submitted projects for public facility improvements. The total request based on these statements of intent is $381,550. This does not include the city's sidewalk program, renewal housing rehab program, our lead-based paint program, financing of the new homeless shelter, or administrative costs. So with all of that, preliminary requests for funding total just under $600,000. Federal funding levels are consistent with previous years. Not all requests will be able to be accommodated, so staff will work with the advisory committee to evaluate projects and identify those that meet the highest priority needs benefiting the most residents. At this time, members of the public are encouraged to give their input on housing and community development needs. This input from this hearing will be incorporated into the five-year plan and the one-year annual action plan. The council does not need to take any action at this time. So that concludes my presentation, and I am available to answer any questions as well.
Questions, council?
Where, could you update me on the sidewalks program? Because there are whole blocks in the city where I'm, it appears to me that virtually the whole block is a rental block, and so the residents can't really effectively do anything about the sidewalks, and the sidewalks are crumbling. How do we, how do we begin to address? Because that should, that's the property owner's responsibility, which suggests to me that it's the landlord's responsibility. What are your ideas for how we begin to address that? Because not only is it dangerous, and, you know, for people with disabilities, obviously it's impossible, but it also contributes to just the general feeling that the neighborhood is, you know, going downhill. So do you have any ideas? What have other cities done? How could we address this?
Thank you for the question. In terms of CDBG, the funding is restricted by federal guidelines. So we are required to meet specific national objectives under HUD's requirements in order to be able to put the funding into what would be public infrastructure improvements. At this time, we have roughly just over $100,000 in CDBG funds allocated towards sidewalks from previous program years. So those, those funds can be used for ADA accessibility, such as creating the ramps and improving that, as well as the individual sidewalk projects that we do for our low-to-moderate income qualifying residents. So we've had two projects so far through this program year. One was a residential sidewalk improvement, which was just over $20,000. And then we also did the First Street Connector from the pedestrian walkway that's under the Benton Overpass as part of that project, and that was also over $20,000, close to $25,000. So as you can see, the funding with only $450,000 for the total program can't really resolve all of the city's sidewalk issues. However, what we're doing in preparation for the upcoming plan and program year is we sort of have a staffer, it's like a task force. We're trying to align the efforts of the Streets Department with the Engineering Department, so we're working with Merrill, to try to figure out where the CDBG funds can be plugged in to extend the amount of funding that the city can kind of efficiently utilize to improve the sidewalks.
Well, and it appears to me, I mean, I guess maybe, as I'm sitting here thinking about it, I mean, I don't want to overburden landlords any more than I want to overburden any other business. But it, has there been any conversation about public-private partnerships, you know, so that we might be able to incentivize or support landlords? Not, not, it's their property. They're making money from their property. So I believe it's fair to say that if their sidewalks don't meet city ordinances, that that's on them, but I also understand that the price of concrete has gone sky-high, et cetera, et cetera. And so I'm just wondering whether there have been any conversations, or whether or not the guidelines would allow some kind of, you know, partnership with landlords to try to get some of these neighborhoods, you know, at least walkable.
That, we could certainly look into that. It would be quite a challenge with CDBG funds exclusively, both because of
Sure.
the limited funding and because of the requirements. So essentially, you would be requiring those property owners to rent to low-to-moderate income residents for the rest of, you know, the housing that they offer, because we have to assist those residents. We're very limited in who we can assist through the area benefit as well.
So do we have a catalog of all the, and Heidi, you might be able to shed some light on this. I have no idea if some of the local landlords, not the public housing, but, I mean, I believe, can't private landlords, don't some of them function with HUD funds?
Because I'm not sure what you're asking.
Pardon me?
I don't believe that they receive HUD funds unless they're going through, like, the housing.
So a non-public housing landlord can't agree to serve low-income residents and thereby qualify for any
Oh, they probably could, but I don't think that's common.
We've not had experience with landlords agreeing to exclusively rent to low-to-moderate income residents. And those income criteria change annually, and we currently don't have an enforcement provision or enforcement arm for that kind of
But we do have a sidewalk ordinance, do we not? And so is enforcement, I mean, I guess I'm just trying to find a way forward here. If we have an ordinance, but we're not enforcing it, and we can't do private
That's sidewalk issue.
Anyway.
But that's not a CDBG.
Okay, all right, okay.
I mean, that's, that's
All right, it doesn't fall under your purview. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Christine, I do have one. Have you seen, had any correspondence other than what you've told us tonight?
No.
Madam Clerk, have we had any in the clerk's office?
None in the clerk's office.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Then will we look for any testimony supporting the application?
Yes, you have someone. Good evening, Mayor Blad and City Council. My name is BJ Stensland. I'm the Executive Director at Aid for Friends. And I'm here because I wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank you and thank the City Council and the CDBG Advisory Committee for supporting our homeless shelter facility renovation and acquisition. I also want to commend you all for the use of the CDBG money to support that project, because it is, as you've been able to see, just a beautiful facility to help us better serve our homeless population. It has more amenities than we've had in the past, and I'm very pleased with it, and I wanted to, again, highlight how important the CDBG money was in that project. We couldn't have done it without you. But Aid for Friends Homeless Shelter is not the solution for homelessness. We're one piece of the mosaic of services. We also need to have the medical health care, mental health services. We need to have counseling available, case management, even transportation and PRT tickets to get people to those services. Combined, all of these agencies that work for our low-income and homeless population, we have one goal, one end goal in mind, and that's to house them securely and safely, to get them transferred from our services into permanent housing. That's, that's what makes Aid for Friends successful. People come into our service, our building, they can get the services, but if they can't find affordable housing, they're just going to cycle back. So I'm, I know it's not under the scope of CDBG, but our housing crisis here in Pocatello, in Idaho, across the nation, is really impacting that stability for our homeless and low-income families. We together can come with solutions. And I know it's not just CDBG money that we need, but we need to look at this crisis, because otherwise, we're going to just see the same cycling. And I would rather see people move into permanent housing. They've just been priced out of the rental market. Five, four, three.
Thank you very much, BJ.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any others in support of the application? Any uncommitted to the application? Any opposed to the application? Okay, Christine, I don't know if you want to rebut what she said, but you're welcome to say a few words if you would like to.
That's counter to what our mission is.
No rebuttals, just a reminder that this, these public comments will be incorporated into our five-year plan and annual action plan. We'll bring that before the council for review and then additional acceptance at a leader public hearing ahead of our submission to HUD. So, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. I declare that public hearing closed. Okay, Agenda Item Number Six, Public Hearing, City Initiated Text Amendment to Title 17 Zoning Regulations. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding amendments to Title 17 zoning regulations related to maximum height limits. I declare the public hearing open. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jim Engelsis, Long Range Senior Planner for the City of Pocatello. The request before you is a city-initiated text amendment to Title 17, Section 17, Chapter 03.600, Dimensional Standards, Regarding Maximum Height Limits. On September 9, staff presented the proposed changes to city council during a work session, and on September 22, a public hearing was held before the Planning and Zoning Commission with a recommended approval of the proposed changes. Height limit standards are found in almost every city in the United States. While height limits vary from city to city, they are typically implemented for reasons such as protection from fire hazards, protection of light and air, or protection of the character of neighborhoods. In the context of the proposed changes before you tonight, planning staff is proposing increased height limits within our commercial and industrial zones. Additionally, in an effort to protect the character of our residential neighborhoods from potential conflicts with adjacent uses, we are proposing height buffers from all residential zones. These proposed changes meet several goals and objectives of the city's comprehensive plan, including but not limited to the implementation of smart growth principles, encouraging infill development, encouraging vertical mixed-use commercial and higher-density residential uses, encouraging walkability in more attractive pedestrian environments, as well as to incorporate more predictable but flexible development options. When it comes to evaluating the height of buildings, we do so by measuring from the average height of the top of the building to finished grade. And as we see continued development among the foothills in Pocatello, there is no expected hardship in regards to the type of low-density residential uses that make up an overwhelming majority of development on our hillsides. In summary, these proposed height changes seek to offer increased options for infill development, specifically regarding the commercial and industrial cores and corridors of the city, and this will provide the flexibility for increased housing options and economic development potential in areas prime for redevelopment. Notice for this hearing was published in the Idaho State Journal on October 5, and again on October 12. Staff has not received any comments from the public regarding the proposed text amendments. Staff has also identified 18 local developers, engineers, and architects to review the proposed changes and provide comment, and no comments have been received regarding those proposed changes from those individuals. The proposed changes were reviewed by the City of Pocatello Legal Department, and no concerns were raised as well. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Council?
In the work session discussion we had, there was, we spent several minutes talking about measurements of residential property heights, but I didn't see anything here that defined how that measurement's going to be taken. And one of the things that was brought up was changing the way that measurement is taken, and I'm wondering if that needs to be defined.
Yeah, we define it for all buildings, not specifically residential or commercial, and it is defined from the average grade of the ground to the top of the building, whether that's peak or flat roof or what have you.
One of the things we talked about was changing that process a little bit to accommodate these taller structures on the hillsides. So I'm wondering if something needs to be written here to accommodate that proposal.
Because I remember, I remember that day, and Brent was saying that if you don't necessarily need to change the zoning or the height for the homes, but that if you measure
Different.
from a different place or a different way or whatever, because I'm not, I don't know. But the, and so I remember that too, but I didn't see anything about that in here.
Right, we did discuss it after that work session, and it was concluded that we haven't had any complaints regarding the way we measured, and so for now, we would, we would leave it as is until we find any issues in the future.
Well, I would hope there would be some kind of a process to let contractors know and developers know that that's kind of a variable, that if they run into an issue, they should let you guys know so we can discuss that, so that we don't hamper any kind of development on our hillsides.
Right. Is there a way for that to happen? If I remember right, that discussion is, there's a way for them to work with the planning department and for the measurements on it.
Brent McLean, Planning Director for the City of Pocatello. So those are great questions. We did discuss that in depth as the whole planning staff together, and as we looked at our current measuring practice, we determined that it wasn't actually causing much of an inconvenience, especially, it mostly comes into play when you have a slope. And so part of what you also will run into is you'll have a really tall backside versus the front side or something of that nature. So it's kind of a balance that you have to play in there. So we felt like we haven't had any real pushback from the developers or from the contractors on that height requirement, so felt like it was probably working okay. That's usually a good indicator of something not working, is if we start getting a lot of complaints about it, and we just aren't. And we sent these standards out to local developers and building contractors, and they have, haven't provided any feedback stating that they're having issues with those height requirements either.
So if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
That's kind of our approach.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jim? Okay, Jim, you mentioned that there had not been any other comments.
No.
To you, but Madam Clerk, have we had any in the clerk's office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then will we look for any testimony supporting the application? Any testimony uncommitted to the application? Any testimony opposed to the application? Jim, you're off the hook unless you want to say something else.
No.
Okay, then I declare the public hearing closed. Council decides before you, how you wish to proceed. Councilman Bray.
Mayor, I move that we amend the Title 17 zoning regulations as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Ortega. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Seven, Rural Grant 5311 and 5339 Formula Grant Applications in Public Transit. Councils may wish to approve the following grant applications for rural 5311 and 5339 formula grants, and if awarded, authorize the mayor to sign related contract documents, and authorize the public transit director to execute the grants, and any necessary amendments subject to award confirmation, legal department review, and budget amendments. No city funds are used for the rural program. A, 5311, two-year operating funding in the amount of $2,114,838. The federal share is $1,474,028.44, with a required local match of $640,809.56. B, 5339, capital funding in the amount of $525,000 for the purchase of four buses. The federal share is $420,000, with a required local match of $105,000. Sufficient matching funds are available in Fund 8 for the purchase of the associated buses. Councilman Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of Agenda Item Number Seven, the Rural Grant 5311 and 5339 Formula Grant Applications and 5339 formula grant applications, and authorize your signature on any related contract documents, and authorize the public transit director to execute the documents and any necessary amendments subject to award confirmation, legal department review, and budget amendments.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by
Wow, that was impressive.
That was impressive, wasn't it? And a second by Lurick. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Could I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
It's just a clarification, because, so then, are these additional buses, replacement buses, and then what happens if they're replacement buses with the buses that end up being surplus?
Good evening.
It's a curiosity.
Oh, sure. Good evening, Skylar Beebe, Public Transit Director, thank you for the question. So, yes, these, this will replace old buses. Essentially, whenever we finish with our buses, they're pretty well done. But yes, so they will be surplus, essentially sent to auction.
Okay.
Or to scrap, whichever comes first, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Chatham and a second by Lurick. Shawnee, could you now call the roll?
Chatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eight, Western State's Fire Manager Grant Subrecipient Application Fire Department. Council may wish to approve a request to apply for $300,000 Western State's Fire Manager Grant as a subrecipient. If the proposal submitted by Idaho Department of Lands, IDL, and if the award, and if awarded, authorize the mayor's signature on any related documents subject to legal department review, the grant will be overseen by IDL and requires a 10% match, which will be met through homeowners' contributions and in-kind services from staff. The reimbursement grant will be used to help homeowners create defensible space around their property in the Johnny Creek area, help reduce fuel loads in the area, and provide training and education to homeowners. The grant period is three years, and if approved, work will commence in the fall of 2022.
Mr. Mayor? I move that we approve a request from the fire department to apply for a $300,000 Western State's Fire Manager Grant as a subrecipient of a proposal submitted by the Idaho Department of Lands, and if awarded, authorize the mayor's signature on any related documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Chatham, and it looks like we have a question.
Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering if that match from homeowners' contributions, if any of that money's been collected at this point? Are we, are we planning for the future, or is this already a burden to hand?
So, we haven't started collecting any of the in-kind, but we can use all of the outreach that we do with homeowners relating to defensible space. Also, if we have crews go up and do some training with removal of junipers, we can count that as in-kind. But majority, we're going to try to get the homeowners involved so that they're invested in it, and hopefully we'll continue it.
But what about the homeowners' contributions?
So, that's what we'll do when, once we go out and meet with the homeowners and they accept the form, accept the money and are willing to do the work, they will have to agree at that time to contribute, sometime within the grant period, to either produce hard cash or in-kind services to meet that 10%.
What if you don't receive the sufficient funds of that 30,000 needed?
So, we can use my, like, our time here at the department, through my outreach through the homeowners, we can use through the crews going out and helping to practice cutting down junipers. So, we feel very comfortable, it's a very modest amount, we feel we'll be able to overly meet that 10% without, without necessarily needing homeowners, but we want to have a vested interest from the homeowners.
Luckily, we've got the chair or something of the homeowners in Johnny Creek, so maybe Chris has a
Right, so depending on what happens with the current RC&amp;D grant, we currently have, I believe, 16, 17, something in that neighborhood, homeowners who were willing to pay up to, I believe, 30% of the cost of projects on their property, which would, and then I already have been getting calls, and I think I have four or five people who are on next year's list that we couldn't accommodate on, on the grant that we have this year. So, I don't think that there will be a problem, because this seems to have gained a fair amount of traction in Johnny Creek, and we haven't done, we haven't done our typical leafleting target neighborhoods or any of that. We just did the one meeting. So, I feel confident that this has finally kind of risen to conscious level in that part of the community.
Good.
Okay, and then Roger, have a
Yeah, I was just wondering, have we paid it forward a little bit? Like, because I know you've done some re, your neighborhood meetings and some stuff like that. Do those count towards our
So, technically, no, not until the grant period opens, and we'll get, if we're authorized to go ahead and put in for this grant, we would probably know in the springtime if there's a recommendation for funding, and then the funds would come available probably fall of next year. So, our goal is to use any people still on the list that would be interested, keep in touch with them, and then, once we get notification of that, we'll have three years, so any of the work or education we do in that three-year period.
It depends on the date of the awarding and everything done after that date.
Correct.
Is it correct? Does volunteer efforts
Yes.
Produce credit to?
Yep.
So, everything the Firewise group does
Counts towards it.
From that point forward can have a dollar value attached to it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We would envision, I think, doing another community meeting, you know, some of the last one that we did produced great results.
And the funds could be, from this grant, could be used to, like, if we were to host an open house, if we were to need educational material, it would help to cover that cost. So, it's pretty open in regards to education and boots-on-the-ground and follow-through, and they're very open to various kinds of in-kind work.
Super. Okay, so we have, any other comments? We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Chatham. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Chatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Is it all right, do I need to recuse myself?
No.
Okay, then yes.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item nine, bid acceptance of Pocatello Creek Booster and Transmission Line Project Water Operations Department. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the bid for the Pocatello Creek Booster and Transmission Line Project to IMCO General Construction Incorporated in the amount of $11,579,980, and if allowed, and allow the mayor to execute contract documents. The construction duration of the project is a total of 18 months. Therefore, adequate funds to begin the project are within the established fiscal year 22 budget amount of $10,307,000, and the remaining funds will be budgeted for completion in fiscal year 2023. Councilman Bray?
I have a question, I'm ready to make, I'll make the motion then part of the discussion. I move that we accept this Pocatello Booster and Transmission Line Project with the loss response, with the bid that is being put to us, and that we allow the mayor to execute the contract documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Chatham, and we have a comment or a question by Bray.
Yeah, I just, doesn't do look good if I turn around.
No, he's coming, he's got long legs and he's running. It's the fastest I've seen Justin run in a while, so that's good.
My question has to do, as I understand it, this project is $11,579,000. We have currently stored up, saved up, $10,307,000, and before this project is completed, we will have the amount collected to move on and pay it whole. Is that right?
Yeah. Justin Artz, Strongwater Superintendent, could you, good question, Councilman Bray. So, yes, we have reserve funds available for this project. This project has actually been deferred from prior years because of some of the challenges with obtaining easements, permits, and it is, has been slated as a multi-year project. We'd initially accounted for the project to be completed in FY '20, and so now we've allocated that portion for pushing this into FY '22, as well as within the following fiscal year. But it has been budgeted within, in the financial planning study that was developed.
And this will help alleviate some of the water pressure problems in the Highland area?
Not necessarily the pressures. Pressures were identified as a problem due to DQ's order that required for us to reduce pressures and bring those down within the operating guidelines that are established within Idaho Code.
So, this is, to get it to the storage place, and then when it flows from there's another issue?
Correct. The existing booster station is very strained with the existing demand and the projected growth. With the projected growth and with the studies that have been presented, we are at the cusp and in need of adding another supply to the area to supply water as that area grows.
And one follow, I noticed where we had to pull one well offline, how much of a reduction is that in the overall supply? Is it a big hit or a minor hit or no hit?
It was definitely a hit. We lost well two, which is the well that you were referring to, due to the nitrate contamination and plume. Well two produced 1,000 gallons per minute. It was a well that the department utilizes on a year-round basis, and we are looking to utilize some, some emergency funds and other things to replace that well and get it back up and running, hopefully within the next six months or six to nine months.
Justin, that well two, as we're speaking about that, and I'll get to you, Chris, that well two was the one that we discussed a few months ago in the Ross Park area, that we thought we had three to five, maybe 10 years left on it, and we, something happened, and we bumped up to immediate now.
Yeah, so well, well two has been, it's, it's, has been required to sample more frequently. So, it sampled every quarter. Our last sample back in August identified that the level was at a 6.68. It had, it had jumped in the, in the next quarterly cycle. And so, yeah, that well, based on, on the notification that those results had exceeded, we had immediately shut down the well, and we're relying on our other sources to blend in.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm thankful for your leadership on that and making sure we got that taken care of quickly. Chris?
So, is, would the, is the fix to drill it deeper, is that, or are we talking about it's done and we're going to start from scratch? I mean, and I understand that may, you may not be able to answer that definitively at this moment, but
Yeah, so we'll, we'll do some investigation and some analysis. Part of that work has already been done through, through some of the previous studies with ISU. What we've determined within those studies is another adjacent well that is drilled to a much deeper depth is actually producing well below the action limits. And we found that the influence is much less at that location if we can get below the strata that's been influenced by the nitrates.
And then my other question is, you, you mentioned that there was money in reserves, and we heard recently that that notion of departmental reserves was never incorporated into the actual accounting system of the city. So, can you just clarify? I'm not questioning it, I'm just wanting to know, now when I hear that idea, that notion of reserves connected to a department, it, you know, it raises questions for me. So, I, and I understand that, you know, enterprise, et cetera, but could you just clarify that we actually know that, that the money in reserves is actually exists somewhere in an identifiable way within the current accounting system?
Sure, and, and I don't have, you know, Jim Krueger's not here, but to address the question, yes, we are an enterprise fund. Our, our funds are separate from the general fund and the taxes, where we develop a five-year capital plan that identifies various projects and builds funds to be expended on large capital projects. Some of those are overall within the five-year plan, and it kind of builds up. Within the initial, we had some, some reserves that were allocated for this project as we moved forward with our facility plans, and so it's just a continuation of that, and
But it's clearly delineated and safe within the enterprise accounting.
That's correct.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I think we have a motion by Bray and a second by Chatham. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Chatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 10, an ordinance, 10A, an ordinance annexing approximately 122.80 acres of land to extend the Pocatello city limits east of the Greenfield and Crestview subdivisions and north of High County subdivision first edition. This annexed property will be rezoned, will be zoned residential low-density with an amendment to the comprehensive plan map designation from mixed-use to residential. Counsel, how do you wish to have this ordinance to be read?
Mr. Mayor, I move the ordinance, agenda item 10A, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
And I just want to go on record as I agree with you, Councilwoman Ortega, quickly, it'll be fine. I didn't think I heard that, but I did.
I thought he was going to say 10A and B.
That's right.
One motion.
One motion. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Chatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Matt, could you please read the ordinance quickly?
An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, annexing and zoning approximately 122.80 acres of land located east of the Greenfield and Crestview subdivisions and north of High County subdivision first edition. Said property more particularly described in Exhibit A of this ordinance, providing for the city clerk to file a certified copy of this ordinance with the Idaho State Tax Commission and with the Vannett County Auditor, Treasurer, and Assessor in accordance with Idaho Code Sections 50-223 and 63-2215, providing for said land to be zoned residential, low-density RL, and amending the comprehensive plan map designation from mixed-use to residential, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass? Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Chatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you, and that was pretty fast.
Mr. Mayor, is there any money available to maybe get some, some lessons in dramatic reading from that?
Might need some, we're
Got to pay rich, got to pay rich for
That's true.
He did do that in one breath, and so
With a mask on. One breath with a mask on. That's impressive.
I think we've found your special skill.
That's right. Okay, we'll move to agenda item 10B, an ordinance abandoning and vacating the public interest in a portion of a utility easement located across lots one through 12, Block One Roper subdivision, and a 10-foot wide power easement granted to Idaho Power located in Lot Three, Block One, Primetime subdivision. Block 1 Primetime subdivision. How do you wish this ordinance to be read? Councilman Bray?
Mayor, I move that the ordinance, agenda item 10B, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Adamson. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Matt, could you please cut, read the ordinance with effect?
Effect and speed are two different things.
We're going to speak.
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, abandoning and vacating the public's interest in a portion of the utility easement established with the Roper subdivision and 10-foot wide power easement granted to Idaho Power, both located in Lot 3, Block 1, Primetime subdivision, Bannock County, Idaho, and more particularly described on the attached Exhibit A, providing that the public utility easement and power easement herein vacated shall be distributed in their entirety to the property owners in accordance with Idaho Code Section 50-311, as deemed to be in the best interest of the owners of the vacated property and for the public good, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
For all. I declare that to be the final reading of the agenda, shall the ordinance pass? And I will tell you, I don't know how you read media with that. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you, and Matt, thank you for entertaining us tonight. With that, agenda item number 11, we have nobody signed up, so with that, before we adjourn, I regret and I apologize for forgetting to mention that it was Rick's birthday yesterday. Happy birthday, Rick.
Thank you, thank you.
Happy birthday. No props from, no props from Heidi?
Linda, one was yours, it was recent, too.
We had
We already mentioned mine.
Yeah, we mentioned hers the last time, it was just recent, so a big happy birthday, Rick. Thank you very much for attending tonight, and counsel, thank you, and with that, we are adjourned.